Every time I look at myself on this, Tracy always notice another extra gray hair or two.
You'll be my color in no time at all.
Week by week.
What are you talking about?
A little bit here, a little bit.
For me? Because me?
Oh, no, not because of you, just because of my age.
Go ahead and run with that one. That's good.
Brenda, see, I got the hat and the earrings going. Like, told me I need to be all stylish.
Oh, you look beautiful.
You know, you've got to give the hat a little flip up on the side or in the front or something, you know. It's just a little flip, make it a little, and give it a little, there you go.
Give it a little tilt.
Yeah, a little tilt, you know.
Tilt. I got this like little bow thing on the side, so I don't know if it does all that, but.
Yeah, you know, much better. Yes.
Are we on sound at all, like, online or anything?
Recording already.
Okay.
But Brenda, do you and I can have a conversation between meetings?
Always available.
Thanks.
Barbie, it seems to work now. I just reset my password and I'm good. I'm all in and everything.
Wonderful. That makes me feel better.
I don't know why, because I logged in last night and my password and everything seemed to work. It's just now it's, it wasn't today, so maybe I had something to do.
I think we've done a little bit of cleaning up in there, and I don't know if maybe it would have done something with that. I doubt it, but you know how technology is.
Yeah, it's great when it works, but when it doesn't, it's a bear.
That's exactly right. You love it when it works, but you hate it when it doesn't.
Absolutely.
Okay, seems that we're still missing one more. See, Jason is just signing on. We're waiting for Commissioner Morey. You're live, Jason.
Hot mic.
I figured it out. Welcome. Let's say we're still waiting one more. Melody or Barbie, you want to check in on the missing person?
Absolutely, I can do it.
Let's bring your pets to the meeting day.
She just had her hair cut, so she wanted to show herself off.
Oh, she's beautiful.
Barbie, do you know, is there an iLegislate app for, like, Androids? Or is, do they have an app or no? Do we know?
I don't think they have one now. So I don't think so, but I can check on that and let you know.
Yeah, I was just curious if I could do it from my tablet as opposed to having to do it from a PC. I know I can log on, I think, through the internet, through a browser. I was just curious if there was an app.
Yeah. I know, I don't have the directions for the Android, but I can sure check that out for you.
Yeah, no, no, no rush.
All right, looks like we have everybody on. Pedro, hello. Got you live there. You good?
Everyone.
Voice check is good. Everybody ready to go? I guess we'll call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners' work session to order. This is Tuesday, March 23, 2021. So at this point, we're just going to turn it over to the town manager, who's going to do a double reverse for us.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, everybody. Appreciate everybody's time this afternoon, and we're going to focus this work session on the work up to this point on the town's emergency operations plan. We'll have our Fire Marshal Kevin Starnes, and hopefully Doug Logan with, there he is, with On Target Preparedness will be called up here on the screen, and what we'll do is we'll try to keep this really just a high-level introduction and overview of the importance of emergency operations plans, purposes, and then a little bit about the plan itself and some of the meat of it. If the board likes, we can have a subsequent meeting, perhaps next month, that gets more into the depth of it, since it is such a big document. And then whenever the board is ready for final consideration, then we can do that after that fact. And so I'll turn the meeting over now to our Fire Marshal Kevin Starnes, who'll say a few opening words and then introduce Doug. Kevin?
Thank you, Jeff, Mayor in Fort. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. So I'll give you a little background. So the town staff became aware of the concept of emergency management and planning around 2017, when Hurricane Florence hit the area, and if you were around back then, you know how kind of, that was a pretty, pretty bad hurricane that came through. So we, staff were, again, we're, after that, slowly kind of building the emergency management team and the planning for situations that might arise in the town. So fast forward a little bit to last year's events with E. coli, the storm, and pandemic hitting kind of back-to-back, we kind of ramped up our, our planning and preparedness a little bit, and and if you remember, we, we started an emergency operations plan in-house, and we presented it to you, and we realized pretty quick that we were, we were in over our, our heads, I guess you could say, as far as our planning expertise. So we decided to, to seek the, the funding, request the funding for this fiscal year to hire a, hire the professionals to come in and give us a good, a help hand writing the plan. So with thanks to Jeff and the board, we were, we were able to get that funding for this year. And so we, we hired On Target Preparedness. They're a local company to North Carolina, very, very highly recommended to come in and give us a hand. And Doug Logan has been our, our consultant that's helped us through, throughout, I guess, since about last October is when we got started. So it's been, it's been pretty, pretty in-depth process, and I've learned a lot. I think everybody's learned a lot, and it's begun a lot of, started a lot of conversations with our town's capabilities. So without any more from me, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Doug Logan with On Target Preparedness, and he'll go over the plan, the process, and everything with you. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully everyone can hear me. Let's see, we have the presentation up. Okay. First and foremost, I will say I was really happy to see the pets, because I'm working in my home office today, and I have three in the background, so as sure as the mailman comes, they're probably going to start barking, so I'll apologize for that upfront. But it is a pleasure to be with all of you. It has been an absolute pleasure to be a big part of this project, moving forward with that as we go on too. So want to digress just a minute before I get too terribly started. We also have joining us in the background, our company CEO and owner, David Hesselmeyer, and I'm sure he is muted at this point for the presentation, but he does share his sentiments, how much we appreciate the opportunity to have worked with the town for this. So at this point, I will move forward with the presentation unless there are any objections. Hearing none. The little background about myself, as said earlier, as Kevin said, my name is Doug Logan. I am the Emergency Management Planner, or one of the Emergency Management Planners for On Target. I've been with On Target for about a year now. Prior to that, I retired from Granville County as the Emergency Services Director after about 25 years of involvement there in that position. Prior to that, I worked on ambulance service and volunteer fire services, so got quite a bit of background with public safety and emergency services. It was just an honor and a natural extension to continue this on, as, as I know I look terribly young to have been able to retire, but fortunate to have started early on. When I was about 12, I got started, so my retirement came early, but very nice to do that. During my years of emergency management, working with emergency management with the county, one of my favorite sayings attributed to Louis Pasteur is "chance favors the prepared mind." That was just always the best thing to, to realize that it's better to be prepared than it is to be lucky. In fact, being lucky has a lot to do with your level of preparation or a community's level of preparation when it comes to disaster response. So I always would ask the question whenever I started any of it, "Are you prepared?" Well, that eventually evolved into what is now in my email signature that basically says, "You don't have to, if you're ready, you don't have to get ready," excuse me there for a second, to do that. So that translates in there with "chance favors the prepared mind" as we move forward. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. So, want to back, back up a little bit and give a little background on emergency management in general, as well as the State Division of Emergency Management, and maybe a bit of an explanation on that. I always found that many of our counterparts and different ones that are not intimately involved with that may or may not understand what emergency management is. Most everybody's familiar with the fire services. They've been around for a couple hundred years. Benjamin Franklin is attributed with creating probably the first volunteer fire department in the United States that they were able to organize and put together for the protection of the general public. So we know that the fire folks are, in general, the people that put the wet stuff on the red stuff, so to say. They fight fire, they add levels of protection within the communities in that particular area of public safety. Law enforcement, well-known for what they do, they provide protection and security and enforcement of our laws within the state and nation, as well as our localities and municipalities. They are the guys and the ladies in blue, that, or brown, or should it be the Sheriff's Department, but they are the ones that provide that. Again, a well-known and pretty well-defined set of duties and responsibilities. Emergency medical services, maybe not quite as old, but they also have been around long enough to know that they're the ambulance folks. They're the ones that, that they swoop and scoop, or they come and they bring the emergency room to your house when you need that. They provide that level of treatment and triage in the pre-hospital setting so that they can get that emergency treatment out to our public or the ones that need that in their, in their worst time. So again, a pretty well-defined set of responsibilities there. So along comes the relative baby in the public safety arena, it's known as emergency management. Emergency management came along as a result of a need for larger-scale disasters to be able to put together this program or this planning efforts to help through larger disasters. So we call ourselves doing the effective management of emergencies and disasters through what's known as the four phases of emergency management, which are preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. And if you notice that graphic there in the lower right-hand corner, it's in a circular representation, because at any one time, emergency management functions will be ongoing in one of those four phases. It's not a linear motion where it has a beginning and end, but it's a constant iteration of preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. So with that, next slide, please. Okay, next slide, please. There you go. So we're at emergency management. It was born out of what was known as the Civil Defense Act of 1950. Prior to that, in 1941, I think most of us remember our history that there was a small incident in the world called World War II. The United States had gotten pulled into that war, and very rapidly, the war escalated to the point where we developed nuclear weapons and utilized those nuclear weapons. As a result of using them, interest in the United States realized that, hey, if we did it, somebody else could do it, and we very possibly face the threat of nuclear attack here on our own soil. So in 1941, shortly after we started into the war, in fact, the FDR administration began the civil defense, or the Office of Civilian Defense is where it began. And Harry Truman solidified that with an executive order, eventually becoming the Civil Defense Act of 1950. And it basically was a system of local preparedness and education to all of our citizens in the United States based around preparing people for the threat of nuclear attack on our own native soil. Next slide, please. Eventually, as we roll through the years past that 1950, we went through the Cold War, we went through the escalation, and then fortunately, the de-escalation of those times. And if you can imagine it being so, someone at the federal level and federal government decided that we face quite a few other hazards and threats other than just nuclear attack. So they took all these resources and they put them together, the training, the education, the money, the pushing down and the planning efforts, and they created the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Next slide, please. In 1979, the Carter administration, by executive order again, created the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA as we know it, to take an all-hazards approach to the management of emergencies and disasters, to be inclusive of natural hazards as well as man-made hazards, and the cross-lines there of biohazards and agricultural. Sometimes they can be natural, sometimes they can be man-made. But it was again to take this all-hazards approach, to take a look at everything that was encompassing of all the threats that, that we faced as, as a nation and as a citizenry. Next slide, please. So within FEMA, we have what's known as the National Response Framework. Pretty much, the best way to describe the National Response Framework is it's a plan for how to create plans at the local level. That was structured and designed to help jurisdictions be able to create those community plans and continuity plans, so that we could figure out how the government, as well as businesses and other entities, would be able to continue to operate in the face of adversity as a result of disaster. So that, that framework, that kind of shell or overall guidance to help us build those capabilities to respond and to perhaps stabilize and restore those services that are so essential to our daily operation and our daily lives. Next slide, please. Within the National Response Framework, we find reference to what's known as the National Incident Management System, or NIMS. So NIMS actually came about following the studies of the 9/11 Commission. It was realized very quickly in an analysis of that particular incident, the horrific incidents of that day and the following days that ensued, that our public safety agencies, though they did a really good job of working as an individual agency, when it came time for them to work together, there really had never been specific guidance on the commonalities of what they do. It was realized that there was a great need for communications, specifically to the 9/11 incident. They realized that law enforcement couldn't talk to the fire people. Unfortunately, people lost their lives that day as a result of that, as a direct result of not being able to interoperate or communicate together, to hear that common language whenever it came out, and they said evacuate. It took, NIMS takes a form of adding typing to various resources, so that we have that common language for responders, so that when one agency asks for, for instance, a fire tanker, we know what they're talking about when we ask for a type 1, or a type 2, or a type 3. So NIMS incorporates all of that. And one of the greatest things that NIMS did is it modified, or I guess simplified, the use of the Incident Command System. This was a system that was created by the National Wildfire Coordinating Council years ago out west for the large wildfires that they face each year. They, they would have as many as, you know, 10,000 to 20,000 people, responders coming together on this single incident to cover, you know, tens of thousands of acres that would be on fire out in California. So they had to have a way to manage this, so that any one particular commander or operations person was not overwhelmed with one person trying to run 10,000 people, or to, to lead 10,000 people and to address those commonalities. So what we end up with, through the National Incident Management System, is this large toolbox for being able to reach in there and pull that tool out and manage that incident response. Next slide, please. Keeping in line with the span of control under Incident Command, North Carolina Division of Emergency Management organized a state into various subdivisions. If you're not familiar with that organization, wanted to share that a little bit here on this presentation. We have the one overall State Division of Emergency Management Office that's located in Raleigh. We have three sub-branches that that office directly works with. You have a western branch with an office located there in Catawba County. You have a central branch with an office located in Granville County, and you have an eastern branch with an office located in Lenore County. Each one of those branches is subdivided, as you see, into areas that are areas 1 through 15, I believe it is. Each one of them consisting of anywhere from six to seven or eight counties within that division, which each one of them has an area coordinator to work directly with those. Further subdivisions underneath the county organizations are municipal and areas for higher education. EM coordinators are located in all 100 jurisdictions across the county, plus the additional jurisdiction of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians within North Carolina. So we have 101 emergency management offices within the county, within the state that are at the county level, and we also have additional offices that are at the municipal level that are subject to coordination through that county level. Next slide, please. So a bit about where it comes from, the general statute in North Carolina that covers that is 166A, appropriately titled as the North Carolina Emergency Management Act. That act itself, or that law, establishes our governor's emergency powers, which I would say over the past year, we're all very aware of the governor's emergency power authority to issue executive orders for the protection of the public, especially during the COVID-19 response. There've been quite a bit of executive orders, I believe, as of today, we're up to 204 or 5, somewhere around in there, executive orders that have been issued within the last year to cover various response. It establishes the Emergency Management Division within the Department of Public Safety, outlines the authorities and responsibilities of our State Division of Emergency Management, sets up the operational organization of the State Division. And as we also know, as government officials, North Carolina, a local jurisdiction can't do anything unless the state really authorizes you to do that. So 166A authorizes local jurisdictions to establish their emergency management programs and offices through that. And it gives us general guidelines for that. Next slide, please. Here's an excerpt from that, where you see that 166A 19.15 does make that reference, an authority that says that the governing bodies of counties are responsible for emergency management, but municipalities may also establish and maintain emergency management agencies subject to coordination through the county Emergency Management Agency. Next slide, please. So, going back to our four phases of emergency management. As we said earlier, emergency management is the effective management of emergencies, disasters, through preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. This particular presentation today, we're concentrating on preparedness. A big part of preparedness is planning, making sure that we have plans in place to address the, the possibilities or eventualities of disaster and the consequences of those disasters that would affect us. The preparedness phase also takes into account training for public safety responders, for volunteers, for ones such as Red Cross or any of the other agencies there, for elected officials, for the general public. It involves public speaking to various civic organizations or religious organizations, gatherings, to any other group that would be receptive to the idea of preparedness information being done there. It involves disaster exercises, to where we put together tests for these plans, and so that we can practice together. Another one of my favorite sayings is that we used to always hear that "practice makes perfect," but quite frankly, practice itself does not make perfect. Perfect practice makes perfect, so we have to keep trying. We have to make sure that we do it the right way, and through these exercises, we're able to continue to test our abilities as well as our plans to make that happen. And it also, preparedness also includes procurement and obtaining certain levels of equipment that would be necessary within the jurisdiction, or outlining where we can get that equipment during the time of need. Next slide, please. So, we will reel back into August. Actually, our discussion started a little bit earlier than that, when we got an RFP from the town to put in a bid to create this comprehensive all-hazards emergency operations plan. On Target Preparedness was very excited to have this opportunity to work with the town over this period of time. As you can see, it's been, it's been several months. There's been a lot of conversation, a lot of work been put into this. A lot of input from the town to make sure that we didn't create just some boilerplate plan that we did a search-and-replace from somebody else, but that we actually did create something that the town had direct input for. So we very quickly, at the initial, or prior to our initial kickoff meeting that was held there, established a local planning team that was consistent of town and county officials, because it does involve outside. because it does involve outside the town limits to making sure that we would stay in coordination together. Within the Comprehensive Preparedness Guide, CPG one oh one, published by FEMA, there's two different forms of an emergency operations plan that we can create. One in discussion with the local planning team there in the town. It was decided to go with the functional annat format, annex format, excuse me, versus emergency support function. Little bit more detail about those functional annexes. Basically outline the general common response to all disasters. The things we identify, things that are common such as evacuation, and we'll talk about those in just a minute, such as evacuation that may need to occur for whatever reason. We plan for evacuation and how we're going to evacuate certain areas or the process we'll use versus trying to say that we're going to evacuate as a result of a hurricane and we're going to evacuate as a result of a bomb threat or we're going to evacuate as a result of a fire. Quite frankly, we evacuate, so let's plan for that common functional area there. Emergency support function is something that was identified probably ten or fifteen years ago is a categorization within FEMA that draws together certain support functions and identifies roles and responsibilities. It was decided again by a local planning team that the functional annex format would be more fitting for the town. Both are very applicable, both are very functional for use going forward. Next slide please. So a bit about plan overview and how that we create plans. Sometimes there can be some misconception about a plan when you look at your plan specifically. Quite frankly, you're probably not going to find exact steps outlined there. If you look at any plan across the state or nation, in the terms of a plan, it basically is a high level at the city or county level document that goes through and assigns roles and responsibilities to certain agencies, to certain individuals, as to how this concept of operations or again, that we build this framework as to how we're going to manage that disaster or the consequences of that disaster. So a plan in this circumstance or in this text establishes the who of an operation. Whereas within your plan, you will note that early on in the first part of the plan.
Lost our sound there. Hey Doug, we lost your audio.
Can you hear me now? Hello? Apparently my headset decided to die on me. I apologize for that. Hopefully the level of clarity is still there. But standard operating guidelines, that is your your procedures, your protocols for an agency. That establishes the how of an operation. It gives you specific directions, the operational parameters or whatever. The best way to describe the difference between the plan and the SOG is that the plan says to the law enforcement agency that security is your responsibility. And the law enforcement agency is responsible to write out there with their level of expertise, how they're going to provide the security. So this plan, the Emergency Operations Plan establishes, again, that who, whereas an SOG establishes the how of an operation. Next slide please. So getting into the meat of your plan, it's organized within recognizable sections that we would move forward. Here's some excerpts of the table of contents. Believe you've been provided with that. I don't know if you've all had a chance to take a minute to review any of it, but if we can go to the next slide, we'll start in how our basic areas of the plan is developed. Next slide. Okay, so the first part of the plan is what we affectionately require or refer to as our basic plan. This is the area where we provide the snapshot of the town. We give out the general purpose and scope of the plan, who it applies to, what it applies to, and what the reasoning behind creating the plan is for. It goes over a general description of the town's boundaries. It describes the organization of the town. It does give that bit of a snapshot in time where it recognizes what your population is, where you're located within the state, within the county, there in Union County. And again, your governmental organization of the town itself. Keeping in mind that all of this becomes necessary should the town become compromised as a result of a disaster and someone else needs to come in behind you. Quite frankly, they don't need to try to create a new town. They need to support and continue operating as the town of Waxahaw has historically operated moving forward. Within the basic plan, we have planning assumptions. I always love this one, but it has to be included, it needs to be included anyway, is that one of the most general planning assumptions is that during a time of disaster, our general public is not always going to like everything that we have to do. So that's one of the planning assumptions we include within emergency operations plans. We identify general concepts of operation for any incident. We have your assignment of responsibility sections that we referenced earlier. There's a section in there that addresses plan administration. Who will be in charge of administering the plan, maintaining possession of the plan, distribution of the plan, even goes into describe how often the plan should be reviewed and updated. There's also a section in here on legal authorities and references so that we have established that within your plan, if it ever needs to be looked up as to why we're able to do that or why we need to do that. Those general legal authorities references are included there within the plan. Next slide please. So your next section of the plan would be your functional annexes. As we said, the Civil Preparedness Guide, CPG one oh one, outlines functional annex as being one method of creating emergency operations plans. Functional annexes are basically the functions and operations that are common to all of our incidents. It establishes the functional areas, agree in common of all incidents, general concepts of operations for each of those functions, as well as it goes over the continuity of operations in government for that. In other words, how and what process would we use in order to maintain the level of essential services to your citizens there? Some of the areas that we cover there is direction control, evacuation, mass care, damage assessment. You can see the rest that are covered, each of them follow a standardized format throughout the process of the plan. Next slide please. So next up, we have your hazard-specific annexes. And whereas we talk about the commonalities of the consequences of disaster and that's what we generally want to plan for, there quite frankly are some areas, some particular hazards that take on a little bit more of a personality of themselves because they are a little bit more unique. Things such as earthquakes or as we have gone through this past year, infectious disease, where we're able to cover those. There are certain things that we have to do or need to do in order to coordinate those particular events that are outside of the generalities of any other disaster. Out, this area lays out your functional areas. It uses elements of the other functional annexes so it may reference evacuation in the earthquake as well as the hazardous materials. But there are very different ways that we will need to handle those. They're addressed and it may outline a little bit more specific procedures and guidelines for those specific hazards that would affect the town. Next slide please.
I have a question.
Yes.
So if you go back a slide to where it says hazard-specific annexes, do you know if there's something for us regarding like the train where that would be specific to our town? Like a train derailment or something along that line?
It does not specifically address that as a hazard specific for that, but there are the other elements, the commonalities of that, hazardous materials, general evacuation, traffic control, direction control. That would be, not to make light of it, obviously, it's a much larger incident than just a normal traffic accident, but it does take care of adding those with the common functionality within the functional annexes.
Well, I understand how you can apply those different components, but would there be a need for something specific to that? Where, because I know here you have like infectious disease or earthquake or terrorism or flood of a dam failure. I mean, would you would want something specific like a train derailment or something like that where it's very possible here?
It certainly is possible to add that. You know, within that, that would be somewhat, it was not identified early on as one of the hazard-specific annexes, looking at that. But again, it certainly could be added as a specific measure there.
Yeah, I don't know what anyone else, I mean, thinks about that. I just know that we've had a train derailment in the past, maybe one or two. And that could be something that we might want to have added to deal with specifically.
Okay, I also had a question. I agree with the train derailment scenario. Also, I haven't heard it mentioned and maybe you will in the future, but I don't see anything regarding riots.
Certainly did not, no sir, it does not specifically address rioting from that perspective, but again, that would come in through law enforcement, through terrorism. Could perhaps any of those elements be brought in to cover that? That is a very larger scale incident that could very well be addressed here as a specific hazard if that is, would be identified for the town.
Well, as Commissioner Simpson said, we've had a train derailment and we've had two protests. Luckily, they worked out fine, but I think having a plan to address something like that type of event probably beneficial.
Okay. We can certainly take a look at that with your planning committee and take that into advisement. If we need to create separate annexes to cover that, then we will be more than glad to assist with that. Okay, moving on, in the further organization of the plan itself, it does include appendices. Appendices take the form of specific reference material for your, for instance, the proclamation of a template, a proclamation template for your declaration of a state of emergency. This is somewhere that you don't have to go looking for it. It's included with your EOP there in the appendices that can easily be pulled out and modified as needed. Some of the ones that it addresses obviously is that declaration and termination of a state of emergency as well as your activation of the emergency alert system, how to do that for your officials. I believe there are placeholders in there for the activation of your town's mass notification system. So all of that would be outlined there within that. But that would be your appendices. They become really common things that are used throughout. As you probably know, in order to issue an evacuation, you would have to declare a state of emergency or need to declare a state of emergency that exists within the town. And you could go straight to your EOP appendices to pull out that template and have that quickly addressed there. Next slide please. The last section of your plan there is your glossary of terms. Emergency managers and public safety in general is pretty good about developing their own language outside of anything that's commonly understood unless you're part of the public safety agency there. So development of that glossary of terms, anything that you would see there for acronyms, the EOC, the EOP, the CPG, the DRC, as you see, they are listed, a small excerpt of those. So anything that's listed in the plan or referenced in the plan throughout should be included here in that glossary. There may be other areas or other terms that it certainly could be expanded upon as we move forward. But again, emergency management, we used to always say, if it's not an acronym, it probably really didn't happen. Just list and list of various acronyms that have been developed over the years. So with that, as I said, this was to be a high-level overview. Give you guys some time to really absorb the material within the EOP as we have created it and worked with town officials to try to make sure that we had something very, very functional, very, very usable by the town as to how to move forward with that. Next slide please. So going forward, it's always essential to note that with any project, typically the process is as important or sometimes more important in this case than the final product. As Kevin referenced earlier, when we got started, this process has really developed a lot of discussion, a lot of things there. As even with our presentation today, we've already noted discussion that needs to be held further about train derailment or about the potential for riots, things of that nature, civil unrest that may need to be specifically addressed here. So it has spurred that conversation among your town officials within that as well as between the town and the county and perhaps at the state level as well to move forward and be able to use that. So where do we go from here? Well, on target preparedness, at the beginning of this project, we agreed as part of the project that we would provide a staff orientation to get a lot more in depth than obviously we have gone in today with the staff of the town so that they understand the makeup of the plan and what's in there and how it works and going forward, how to utilize that and really to how to stay familiar with that. Throughout the plan, there are ample training opportunities in the assignment of responsibilities. One of the thing, primary assignments for all agencies as well as personnel is that to be able to obtain the recommended level of training under the National Incident Management System or under the Incident Command System so that everybody understands that common language. So when we say, report to the operations section chief, you would know who that is. You would have that general understanding of how to move forward. So we have had some discussion with the town manager and Kevin Fire Marshal to say about going forward with how we could obtain that training and be able to really get on that. Ongoing exercises, the plan, we mentioned that earlier in the preparedness phase as to how we move forward with that. So an exercise plan, certainly not, you know, going to the gym and running on the treadmill and that kind of thing. Obviously, I told Kevin earlier today in the conversation that I was having an apple for lunch because I had the COVID nineteen hanging over my belt. And I certainly need that kind of exercise, but exercises in relations to emergency management. The Homeland Security Exercise and Evaluation Program outlines ongoing exercises. In other words, as you see that circle there, we write plans in the preparedness phase. We create plans together. We don't do planning in a vacuum. But once we do that, then we design an exercise to test those plans to really see their efficacy, their functionality, are they really going to work for us? One of the very basic levels of an exercise is a tabletop exercise where we come together, we pick a subject, either it's scenario-based or it may be a plan orientation. And we sit around the table with the responsible players and we have a discussion. It's not time-based. It's not anything other than a very, very low-pressure discussion around this particular area of the plan. We say, okay, Mr. Fire Chief, you're assigned with this responsibility. Under this scenario, how would you approach this plan? And we talk about that. And that one in turn spur another area because he's inevitably going to say, well, I'm going to have to have traffic control or I'm going to have to have security. Or I'm going to have to have security for the area. So that would pull in your police department there to to join that conversation. And we talk about those processes and at the end of it, we go back and we do an after action review to really identify those areas and say, you know. Honestly, this is what we planned and you know what? It worked. Or this is what we planned and it didn't work. We're not going to be able to do it that way. So we create an improvement plan at the end of it so that we can really modify that. So that that's your kind of ongoing in future of that. Functional and full scale exercises really take it to the road. That's where especially in a full scale exercise, most of you may be familiar with. We used to call them mock disasters where, you know, we would set up and perhaps the town would would simulate a a train derailment. And have all of our responders get the call just like they would in real time. We have observers to watch and see if they're able to function according to the plans. We still go through that after action review, improvement planning, modifying the plan. So it still takes on that circle. We need to do annual plan reviews. No plan is good if it sits on the shelf. Nothing you you write, nothing you create. If you create it and the 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 last time you looked at it was whenever the project was finished and put it on the shelf. You don't pull it off and review, there's obviously going to be updates and modifications that need to be made as we go forward. So it needs to take the form of a living document that it needs to move forward. And as I referenced earlier, that improvement planning that really needs to take place as we. Prepare, as we write the plans, as we respond according to those plans. We go through that recovery and mitigation process and we come back into preparing. We create that improvement. We need to constantly seek to improve how our plan is written and how it moves forward with that. So with that, I would ask for next slide. Okay, that was the end of what I had prepared the presentation for today. I greatly, greatly appreciate the the time and and that everybody, you know, is spending with me today. To allow us the opportunity to explain a little bit about a very high level overview of the plan. As we mentioned, going forward, we will be scheduling with the town a staff orientation session. Whether that takes form of a in person, if we've gotten to the point of of release of COVID restrictions. Or if we need to do it with the virtual means that we have here available to us. We will comply with whichever is most convenient for the town. Certainly in person makes it a lot better, but we will make ourselves available as a company. To present to your your town employees and and other volunteers that may be affected by this plan. So that we can give them that understanding of of how the plan operates and works and what forms it would take. With that, I would open the floor or turn the floor back over to, I think Kevin introduced me. I'm not sure how how the hierarchy would work there. Mister Manager, Mister Mayor, but I do appreciate the the opportunity again, once again, to have have been here with you today and to have really. It's just been a great experience to work with the town on this project and really hope that we can work with you more on future projects.
I think you have a couple more questions, I'm sure Doug, but I'll I'll jump in here. Real quick and just add on on the budgetary side that we are incorporating into this upcoming budget. Training, as Doug had mentioned, and we are intentional be is to to include that in every budget moving forward to make sure that we are. Getting the proper training that we need to to practice these scenarios and some type of mock. As he said, real time scenario moving forward. And as he said, it includes some some initial training that we will do once we get past these steps. And so moving forward, I I think in the initial comments from Ann and Pedro were good. And we can look to incorporate those in into the next round. When we could actually dive more into some of the specifics of the of the text if you would like to. And we can certainly continue to keep the floor open to Doug on his expertise to answer any other questions that you may have.
Looks like we have a couple of hands raised up there. I see we'll go with Commissioner Hall. I think he's got a hand up and then up to Commissioner Simpson. Jason, did I, do I see a hand up on yours?
I did not raise my hand.
There's a little hand on your screen. Don't know if I can, I'm up, I'm the only one who's seeing it. But with that, we'll jump up to Commissioner Simpson.
Great, thank you. A question that I had is like in your experience, have you seen other municipalities or towns come? Have any appendices that address like Commissioner Moore's concern with riots or my concern with train derailments? Is that, have you seen that before or? Do they, do they have any, any type of appendices for that?
Ultimately, it is up to the the town itself as to what you want to include in your your emergency operations plan. It has typically not been my experience to have specific areas there. Years ago, we did have civil unrest in some of our plans, but a lot of the the common planning functions for that. General law enforcement, security and different things of that were were included. I in today's environment, I certainly don't think it would be out of the question to include those. And again, we would definitely be more than willing to assist with with that creation.
I guess my question was, is we are reinventing the wheel if other people have already done and thought about this is sort of where it's getting at? I mean.
No, ma'am, I wouldn't say you were necessarily reinventing the wheel. Again, if it's if it's something that that is of concern to the town, the good thing about these, as we said, you know, if the town wants to see that, the town can see that, absolutely. This is your plan. It's not, it's not Doug's plan. It's not on target's plan. It's Waxhaw's plan. Things that that it may run a little bit along the line of more of a standard operating guideline. That the police department would have as they were going to certainly be handling the the largest part of that for there. But some of the other commonplaces, whether we would implement evacuations as a result of rioting. Or as I said, there, those common areas, once, once the incident commander. Obviously, I I would say in my mind, if a train were to derail, you know, today, let's knock wood that it doesn't. But if a train were to derail today, your fire department's pretty obviously going to be the first one on scene. EMS would be surely behind that. Law enforcement obviously would be behind that. And each of those would have their standard operating guidelines as to how they're going to handle their responsibilities within that. Once that situation grows past the initial incident is where your emergency operations plan really would take effect. Once it grows past what those boots on the ground responders, I I guess you would call that. When they elevate to the point that they contact Kevin, he's on scene and he says, you know, this is, this is going to go on for days. Or this is going to affect the water system or this is going to, you know, any of those types of things at that point, which again, all of that's going to be happening. Pretty, pretty too sweet. If I'm, I go back to my high school French. We, it's, it's going to happen pretty quickly and and activation of those other functional annexes would then come into play. That direction control may would kick back if it was deemed necessary. May even go to the point of opening, opening your town emergency operations center. To to bring up in staff and support those boots on the ground responders. But the initial response and anything like that from from a a train derailment, obviously, is going to happen. And I'd say within the first six to eight hours of that derailment. Is going to be the 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 initial responders of that.
Doug, one other thing I I noticed that wasn't included was some sort of food emergency. Where whether it would include water, but more to the effect of. A food shortage or some sort of contamination with our food supply.
Yes, sir, I I agree with that and and honestly, I've I've not seen that specifically addressed in emergency operations plan. That would be something that would be, unless there was a significant event that that created all the grocery stores burned up. And and there was no other transportation method to to bring in, you know, outside supplies or anything of that nature. I I've not typically seen that addressed if, again, if that's an an annex that that the town would like to see included or addressed in here. I certainly feel working together with Kevin and the rest of the planning team, we can, we can create that for you.
The reason I ask is just before COVID hit, about thirty seconds after we got sworn in. We had an ECOLI issue and we had a bird, a possible bird flu issue with. Culture throughout the, throughout the state. That never came to a, to a, to become an issue, but the ECOLI was as minor as it was, but it was a concern. And there were, there were folks are projecting how that could actually tip off a a domino effect for other things. And then, then along came COVID. So it's, that's just the reason why I I put that, I put that question up.
Yes, sir. Certainly, those would be addressed within, you know, public health emergencies as well. And and the the direction and control that would come from public health and with the towns, just as in the COVID situation. Public health has been in charge of the overall operation for the state as well as the majority of of the local jurisdictions there. Throughout the past year, but those are certainly areas that that. With your concerns expressed that that I would say that we need to take a look at and and how we can incorporate those into your plans.
So going back to the. Civil unrest and the and and train or railroad incidents. One of our intentions is to to add some annexes and appendices to the end of the of our of our plan. One of them being some, some maps of the town with a. With 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 debris sites, possible shelter locations, things like that. So what we could look at doing is is adding something in the appendices or is like what Doug said, a functional annex. For for anything specific that we may want to not actually necessarily have within the 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 meat of the plan. But when you pull the plan, you also pull, pull these and you can reference those specific type of incidents. But it's, but we have to be careful though to to not get too much, as we say in the emergency management world, in the weeds. With with things, we don't want to to overthink what any kind of standard operating procedures or guidelines would be with with police, fire or EMS. But but it's something that we could, we could certainly do. After, once, once the the full document is in place, then we can add these, these on the end of it.
I think it's good discussion and and what we'll do based on the comments today is is we'll. We'll make a run at looking at these areas and see what we can formulate there. We'll, we'll craft, craft that as as we see fit. And then we can prepare that as part of the update to the board and then the next time around, we can get into. Specifics like that. As well as a few other areas, you know, looking at some of the roles of of some of us. Town manager, the mayor's role, et cetera, et cetera, those kind of things. And and hopefully try to get this ready for a for a formal adoption. So that would be my suggestion moving forward.
I think the the sooner the better on that, just to have, it's not like we don't have a plan right now that's in place. And certainly have faith in Kevin and his team and all of our emergency providers. They're, they're ready to serve even without a plan, but it is nice to have some backup and some order to it all. So how, what's your thoughts on timing of getting this back to us, Kevin?
I'll slide that right back over to Doug and see what what he thinks. I mean, we can get the information pretty quick. So it just depends on what we, how how far in depth we we want to go with it. I'll let Doug kind of answer that, that one.
So, I mean, the 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 short answer is I I stand ready to, you know, jump on this tomorrow, I mean, if necessary. Work with you on that, Kevin, your availability, any of the other local planning team and and make the decision how you want to move forward. Include those sections or to. Figure out the best way to address those those concerns that had been done that. So I would say, first thing in the morning, let's, let's plan on having that discussion on the telephone and and figure out how we can make this happen.
We do have the luxury this time around of, this is one of those months where you have, the the second meeting is the twenty third. And you have that extra week in between our first meeting in April. So we'll have three weeks instead of two weeks. And so I think what we might, we will strive to do is is to have that back to you for your review. On April thirteenth, if you think that. I guess if you, if you're thinking tomorrow, then April thirteenth sounds reasonable then. Does that sound reasonable, Doug?
Yes, sir, I will make that happen.
Excellent.
Be looking for my call at six AM. We'll, we'll get that started.
I I normally get up and have coffee ready by five. Is that okay?
All right, well, from my standpoint, you know, the sooner the better that we can put this in play. It sounds like we're down to the short strokes really and just some minor revisions, additions, tweaks, comments, whatever you want to call them. But, you know, we certainly have the makings, as I understand it, of a complete plan right now.
That's correct, yes.
I guess the last comment is, is everybody in agreement on where we think it is right now, Kevin, basically Kevin and Doug? Do you think that we're, we're down to the short strokes, the very short strokes?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're, we're right there. Like what you said, we're, I mean, this is pretty much a a complete plan as it is, how it is now as it was presented. But that's why we wanted to bring it to the to the board. And if there were any concerns or tweaks that we that need to be made to it, we can get those pretty quick and 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 be done with it, yeah.
Yes, sir, I I concur with that, Mr. Mayor. I I don't see any problem with being able to finish this up probably in less than a week's time with many additions that would be deemed necessary by the town.
Great, I appreciate that. It's, it's going to be helpful. I mean, we've got a more refined document this time around, which is better than what was there before. We just, you know, strive to improve at every turn. So appreciate you guys' effort on this. And Kevin, I guess we'll turn it back to you on any other comments you want in closing.
Okay, yeah, I guess I just want to add that, that. Apart from the county, which they have to have one of these and and probably Monroe. We're the only other jurisdiction or municipality in the county that's taken this proactive approach to emergency management. And it's, it's a good thing that 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 we have the the town leadership and and town elected officials kind of on our side with. With emergency management. I I've been in a lot of classes in the past couple of years, emergency management. And and you wouldn't believe how many, how many people there in those classes. Talk about how they can't get anybody on board with with this kind of planning and and preparedness. And it shows you that that we're real, we're kind of, we're way ahead of of a lot of other places. So so I appreciate everybody's tentative to, attentive, attentiveness to the to this subject. And God forbid, you know, we'll ever have to need this. Hopefully we won't, but we'll, I I hope, I I feel confident we'll be prepared if if something does happen in the town. Something else, I guess, happens.
But then we don't want something else is. So, all right, Kevin and Doug, thank you very much. Jeff, I'm going to back up to you if you've got any more comments on this.
No, I don't have any more comments, Mayor. That's, that's great thoughts and feedback. Just wanted, as I mentioned, just give a very high level view. I think it was important just to to give the brief thirty thousand foot view on emergency management. And how it came about and the reasons and purpose for it and then an introduction to our plan that we have. And we've gotten some, some good initial direction today to add those couple of things or incorporate that in. And we'll, we'll come back in April with those updates. And then we'll, we'll get into the weeds a little bit more at that time, I guess you could say. Thank you.
I appreciate all the effort that's gone through this process. We get this one down, we'll have another initiative under our belts. So good work, everybody. And thank you to the board and everybody that supported the effort going forward. We started this last year sometime and. supported the effort going forward. We started this uh last year sometime and Kevin, you've been uh busy rewriting and writing and rewriting again. So again, thank you for all that effort and uh we'll look forward to the final document and uh put it in play for you. All right. Any other comments by any other board members on this? All right. I don't see any more hands out there. So right now, we're going to be done with this. So I'm going to call for an adjournment on this meeting and we'll be done. So we're good. Right, Melody? I see the head.
Yeah.
So I'll just say goodbye to all of you until the next meeting. Be good.